Hey, everybody. Welcome to the program and thanks, everybody, for your support. Oakland School Board member Mike Hutchinson is the rare example of an elected official who consistently ran for the position he holds now and made a promise to do-
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
... And, once he got the position, remained true to exactly what he said he was going to do. And if you have doubts, well, folks, first of all, before we continue, Mike, how you doing?
Good. Thank you for having me on.
Hey, thank you for being here. Oh, by the way, hey, um, before we get too far, Wilma Chan, your thoughts about her passing?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't know her personally, but of course, it's a tragic and sad loss. And I think we really need to take time to honor and pay our respects to somebody who dedicated decades, literally over three decades of her life, to public service. And especially before I launch into whatever I'm going to say. You know, beyond some of the politics and the arguments some of us get into, for me personally, I will always respect what we call lifers, you know, people who have really have skin in the game and have dedicated their lives to public service and trying to make things better. And although we might sometimes disagree on strategies or tactics or even goals, we do need to make sure that we take time and really acknowledge that we are in this together and really pay tributes to the folks who gave up their own personal lives to serve all of us.
Amen to that, yeah. Couldn't have said it better. On that note, too, you've been that person on the other side and making a brilliant case. And Oakland has made up a lot of great individuals like Mike. So I think, you know, we should really take time, that's what I'm doing right now, to celebrate accomplishment. But also, because we talked five years ago, right here, at the, this was at Oktoberfest, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Uh, in the Fruitvale, which is a wonderful time. If you've never done it, you gotta do it. It's a fantastic event. But he was running and I was only too happy to give him a platform and voice and say, hey, look, vote for this man. Here's what he said. This is October 3rd of 2016, when the Raiders were still in Oakland.
Folks, it's my pleasure to present Mike Hutchinson. He is running for Oakland School Board District 5. Mike, this is your platform, man. Tell them why they should vote for you.
First, hopefully, people will really take a look at the elections this year. I think I have a stated record, especially over the last five years, of what I've been trying to fight for in our city. My three main priorities this year, if I'm elected, are to really create an authentic community engagement process so we can really harness the energy and the passion that we have in Oakland and bring people around the table and really influence the decision-making process. I want to reprioritize the budget. This year, our budget for the school district is $792 million. You can't convince me that's not enough to have quality full-service schools in all of our neighborhoods. I think we could take the up to $80 million that we spend a year on paying outside consultants. If we redirected that money back to the classroom, we could lower class sizes across the board and give every school employee a raise. We also could do advocacy work in Sacramento to get our debt to the state forgiven and really bring more resources to Oakland. And the third thing I really want to see happen is the end of the privatization going on in our school district. We have the highest rate of charter schools in the state of California. We've been taken over basically by four billionaires and there are astroturf organizations like the Oakland Public Education Fund and New Schools Venture Fund and Educate 78 and a whole long list of them. And unfortunately, we need public schools in our neighborhoods. We need full-service public schools across Oakland. And if you look at a map of Oakland, you will see that of the forty-some-odd charter schools that we have, only two of them are above 580. And we know in Oakland that, we know in Oakland that if charter schools were a better educational experience, that the families in the hills would be demanding them. And instead, the opposites happened. They fought off charter schools in the hills, and so they've all been put in the flatlands in Oakland. And as any longtime Oakland resident kind of knows intuitively, when we see these things happening only in certain communities, it's hard to believe that they're really going to benefit all of us.
Tell them how to find you online.
So, again, my name is Mike Hutchinson. I am on Facebook. I have a website also, Please feel free to reach out to me. I have lots of videos on YouTube. Like I said, I've been speaking on these issues for at least the last five years. I would also encourage people to go back and look at any of the school board meetings that happened over the last few years. I'm always there speaking on the issues, and it'll also give you a good idea of where the incumbents up for reelection have stood on these same issues. Because my main criticism of the four incumbents, who I really hope people will consider not voting for, is their voting record. And we in Oakland don't look at the voting records, especially our local officials. And I think that'll really, that'll really inform us on if these people are serving our best interests or if they're just looking to serve people from outside of Oakland.
Give him your vote, folks. He's Mike Hutchinson. Thanks, man.
All right, thank you.
And Mike, five years later, you scored. You got us now to where we're not closing schools, keeping them open. That was one thing that you really harped on about again and again and again, and have for quite some time. And what I'm congratulating you on is having a clear and consistent voice, message, and delivery with respect to other people, with respect to the institution, in fact, improving the institution. And then, once you take office, you do everything you can to do that, just improve the institution. In fact, kind of the opposite of what John Kenneth Colbert accused Republicans were doing, which is accusing government of being inept. And then, when they took office, doing everything they could to make it so. You accuse government of being inept. And then, when you took office, you did everything you can to make it good and not inept. Brilliant, active, caring about the people. Bravo, my man.
Thank you. I'm trying. You know, and I think, before I start popping my collar too much, I really want to stress that, you know, it is a, it is a big job and actually, you know, today is the one-year anniversary of my election. And I'm really proud of how much we've gotten done so far, but there really is a lot of work left to do. And for OUSD, for our school district, it's kind of a particular issue because we were taken over by the state in 2003. And my analysis has always been that a lot of our real structural issues that we're facing currently are due to that state takeover and what that caused, including school closures, including the proliferation of charter schools, including the destruction of many of our services and programs, from early childhood education to adult ed. And that was all done when we were disenfranchised as a community. And so, a lot of what I've always been trying to do with a lot of folks in the community is regain local control. But more than that, regain a local control orientation where decisions weren't going to be dictated and imposed anymore, that we were going to operate for the benefit and at the will of the community. And so, I don't see it as actually that revolutionary or radical. And so, with that opening video that was from five years ago, the one thing that I didn't mention much in that video was school closures. So I'll just launch into it from here, because what happened in that election in 2016 is I lost. And I lost soundly. And all four of the incumbents for school board who were up for reelection, all four of them were reelected. And reelected, they thought, with a mandate. That was in 2016. That was then when Superintendent Antoine Wilson was brought in from Denver. And that school board launched what they called their blueprint process, which then became the citywide plan, which was their effort to, again, launch a process to close public schools. And so, we were at a really low point. We, the people I work with, and actually, me personally, after the 2016 election. We had lost. We had been, it looked like defeated on the issues. And we had a school board then that was doubling down, moving ahead with the destruction of our public education system. Thankfully, over the last five years, we figured out the special sauce and we figured out how to organize and fight in a different way. And without going through all of the nooks and crannies, we got to the 2020 school board election. And the important thing leading into that election is we drove all four incumbents out of office. So the four incumbents who had won in 2016, all four decided not even to run for reelection in 2020. And so, we had completely forced them out of office. So we were running for open seats. I explicitly, for the third time, ran a campaign where ending school closures and ending the financial mismanagement in OUSD was my top issue. I had worked at a school in 2012 that was closed. That's what got me into this kind of work, and that's always been the issue that's most personal to me is the closure of our neighborhood schools, our public schools. So I was able to run a campaign, a winning campaign, that was endorsed by State Superintendent Tony Thurman, the Democratic Party, but also the Teachers Union, DSA, Democratic Socialists of America, and a broad, broad coalition of endorsements. The best part of that was, they weren't just endorsing me. They were endorsing my platform. And my top issue was ending school closures. So when I was elected, I was elected with not just a mandate to be a school board director, but a real mandate to end school closures, which was amazing. So I was feeling good November a year ago. But I hadn't calculated for the three months the lame duck school board had left in 2020. So what the outgoing school board did in December of 2020, at their last meeting as a school board, is they passed a resolution for school closures. A resolution for blueprint cohort three of school closures, which laid out a process for the year after they were out of office that would have ended with a series of schools being closed. Because there is nothing that forces us to close schools. There's not a statewide process that says every year Oakland needs to go close schools. So it's all done by resolution. And because the former school board wasn't very good at their job, their resolutions were very weak. And so, they never had an ongoing resolution that called for a yearly process. When they would enter into school closures, they would do a resolution for that cohort for the next year. So they passed the resolution back in December of 2020, which called for school closures in this year in June. But since I was on the school board by that point, I was able to get things delayed. And when the staff did their analysis, it was a very favorable analysis. And so, we got to June and other school board members, because there are still many school board members that wanted school closures, passed a delay in the blueprint and delayed that decision until September. I tried to fight against that delay because we could have ended it then, but I just couldn't quite pull it off. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, I remember the December when that happened, you raised hell so loud that you could literally see it through Facebook, feel it through Facebook. And it was, to me, the perfect example of what is called a corporate heretic. You were in the corporation and yet, from within, basically, almost chest bursting and saying, this is gonna end right now.
I was, I was, that school board meeting, because we were in the pandemic, was over Zoom. I told them directly. I said, this is one of the most cynical things I've ever seen. And you all know that once I'm sworn into the school board, we're overturning this and your time is over, and this is why we drove you from office.
Yeah.
So, we got to June. I was almost able to stop it in June. But the plan was already on the ropes because it had already lost real school board backing because of the turnover, and it had lost a lot of its institutional momentum. And I now know, looking back, that the superintendent and senior staff were never in favor of closing our schools. So they helped delay these decisions long enough where I could get onto the school board. And so, all of that brings us to September, when it was extended to, well, two school board directors in September, Director Sam Davis, with the help of Director Amy Ng, introduced a resolution that, again, called for the extension of the blueprint, another year. Now, they were very cynical in how they framed it. They called it a delay of the blueprint decision. And then laid out a process over the next year of how we'd get to that decision. They even fooled many people. I was getting emails from folks who are against school closures, who were trying to tell me to support that resolution, that it would stop school closures.
I remember, right.
And I kept telling them, no, it won't. That's extending it. Well, because I serve on a school board where most of the school board directors don't understand how things work, we came to a vote for the extension of the blueprint, and by a vote of four to three, we turned that down. And the other three people who voted with me, know on the extension, are actually in favor of school closures. They just didn't understand what they were voting on. One of them, after the vote, turned to general counsel and said, so what does that mean now? General counsel turned to him and said, that means school closures are over and you have to vote $6 million in budget adjustments and this is done. And they were shocked and didn't know what hit them. That was my reaction, because I guarantee you, I knew exactly what was happening every step of the way. And I couldn't believe that these folks who had pushed school closures on us, because of their lack of understanding, in the end, gave me the opportunity to end it. And so, the final step was, at our school board meeting on October 27th, we voted for budget adjustments to accommodate on the multi-year projections not closing schools. And that was all just smoke and mirrors, because the previous board had been claiming that school closures saved millions of dollars and had written that into the budget. So we needed to make this adjustment just on these budget projections. And we'll not be doing our actual budget until the spring, and it'll be nothing. And so, it was the original resolution said that if you don't vote to close schools in this cohort, you have to make $2 million in budget adjustments. We did that. We satisfied the resolution. There is no standing cohort resolution, and it's gone. And here's the last part is, I've also been able to do a couple of other things. Like, I didn't know this opportunity was going to drop in my lap. So I'd already been moving in other ways to make sure school closures are over. So two other things have happened. We approved a new strategic plan for three years last June. Well, most people don't know, because I kept it under wraps, that I was the school board sponsor to the strategic plan. So I was the only school board member who was involved with making the strategic plan. And I was in that role because, first off, because the superintendent appointed me to that role. And I was in that role specifically to make sure that any language around school closures, the blueprint, or the citywide plan were scrubbed from the strategic plan. I was also there to make sure any mention of charter schools were scrubbed from the strategic plan. So not only is school closure's over, we also have a strategic plan that will be guiding our work for the next that does not mention school closures. The last thing is, we also have a new master's facilities asset management plan. It's not like other ones have looked. We have, it's kind of a living document where all of that information is now being held. But staff has redone our inventory of our facilities. So before, we had very biased data that had been developed during the blueprint process to push towards school closures. That's all been thrown out, and we have new reliable information. So I ended school closures. I scrubbed any mention of it from the strategic plan for three years. And I threw out the data that was being used to justify school closures in the first place.
Hey.
Here we sit, and we are clean break. It is done.
Hey, I gotta ask you, begs the question. Do you, if you have a group of electants that really don't understand exactly what it is that they're backing your passing, does that point to their being on an agenda that, where they're being influenced by some organization or constituency or money? I don't hate to put that out there, but it just seems like it's hanging out there.
So, yes and no. So I think we're all influenced by who's ever in contact and relationship with us.
Absolutely.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
There's no escape from that. That's true.
And a lot of the, and most of the board members, it's fairly obvious who they're most in conversation with. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. One thing I do know now is, there is no conspiracy, though, how we imagine it. There's not, at least now. There might have been before.
Right.
But now, since I was elected, there is no invisible hand guiding things. I've gotten a lot of stuff passed through the school board. Each time I've gotten something passed, it's been a different combination of board members. I've co-authored and co-sponsored resolutions with board members that people think I work with. And I've done them with people that I would never work with in another setting. And so, I don't, I don't think that's what it is. I find, generally, there's a lack of institutional memory and institutional knowledge. And so, I was coming in with a certain plan. I'm really excited about some things. So I think we are, we are finally starting to establish a rule of law within OUSD, where when a resolution is passed by the school board, the letter of that resolution becomes the guiding policy that we all reference. I think having a stronger general counsel who sees that-
Professionalism.
Professionalism is big. And so, for me, it's still, it's a, we're at the start and it's an ongoing process because this is what the state takeover broke. But the more we can have a set process where everyone understands the rules and this is how we do it, the better off we'll be. And for me, I'm fairly confident and I have a lot of knowledge of the institution. And so, I also think it's to my advantage politically to have stated rules, because once I know what the rules are, I'm gonna win. You just need to let me know what the rules are. And that's kind of, I'm, all of my work for ten years against school closures. And I've, you know, thousands of hours, meetings, speaking engagements, testified at the Department of Education, whatever. If I didn't have that kind of experience and knowledge base going in, I wouldn't have been able to seize the opportunity when it presented itself on the school board. And, you know, I was, you know, there will never be a victory that's this personal to me. And so, it was, it was an emotional experience. I grinded for ten years. I had everything taken away. I was fired from my job for organizing a community meeting to stop a closure. I was blacklisted from working with kids. I mean, I literally dedicated ten years of my life to this. And it worked, and we won. And so, now we're moving into these other things with the bigger, like, next thing, the campaign is, let's get free for 2023. Because we will be free of the trustee and the state oversight by January of '23. We might even be able to do it sooner, either by paying off the state loan or just by challenging their authority, which they don't have. That's also what happened with the school closures. So here's a little side, you'll appreciate this. So we still have a trustee who is now appointed by the county superintendent, who oversees the district's finances. So they have to approve every budget, every spending measure. And so, it's kind of this crazy circle where they have to approve everything, but then they yell at us and say, we can't manage our finances, when they signed off on every decision over the last 20 years anyway. So, you know, you can't have it both ways. So, but we have never, as far as I know, there's never been a case of the trustee staying or rescinding a decision by the school board, even though they claim to have that authority. But what's happened regularly is they threatened to do it. And we just, while I've been on the board, we had the incident during the resolution for Black reparations, where the trustee at the time, Chris Learned, came to a school board, I'd never seen that before, came to a school board meeting and told everyone, if we passed it, he would stay that decision and the reasons why. And then, the school board, over my objections and Director Williams' objections, amended the resolution so he wouldn't overturn the decision. So I knew for coming into the school board, if that was the case, I wanted to challenge that. Because I don't understand why you backed down from that threat. So the day of the vote to end school closures, the final step with the budget reductions, the trustee called the board president and the board vice president, and the word went out to all of the board directors. The trustee is threatening to stay the decision if we vote this way. So I thought it might have doomed everything. I was very happy to see the board ignored it and voted for this anyway. I got an email from the trustee the next morning, saying, I think it's time to talk. So I will be meeting with the trustee, but it produced an immediate response from the trustee. And now, they are asking for more details from that decision. So last night, the school board just passed another resolution that said, the new information the county's asking us for, we need more time to put that together. And if they won't give us more time, the county superintendent needs to come and testify at the school board meeting in two weeks. And so, I'm excited because we need, we called the bluff the first time. They said they'd stay the decision. They didn't stay the decision, and I don't think they have that authority. Tony Thurman is not going to weigh in against us. Tony Thurman, who endorsed my campaign, who many of us have good relationships with, is not going to come in and say, no, the trustee has to oversee it. Karen Monroe, the Alameda County superintendent, appoints the trustee. Karen Monroe's up for reelection next year. She better be careful, because the same people that elect her, elected me. And so, it is finally time now, where this is where, hopefully, elections really have consequences. I didn't think it would be this quick, or in a lot of ways, this easy, and easy is a relative word. But this is restoring the proper authority to the school board.
Yeah.
I'm not, you know, that's all it is. And it has been very encouraging that district staff has largely been on board with what I've been doing, or at least they sure have not put up barriers, which I was, which I didn't know if that would happen or not, you know, coming in.
Isn't it comforting to have a constituency of people that are the staff and yet, you know, with you?
Yes, it is. And, you know, referencing the video even from 2016. 2016, I was still largely an outsider, or perceived that way, which was always strange because I am OUSD through and through. You know, my mom was a 40-year teacher. I grew up, went to our schools, worked in them for 20 years, been going to school board meetings literally my whole life. So I was never an outsider, but people really perceived it that way. And it's one of the things the folks I work with that we learned, is how to, as we were organizing, really make sure that we were framing this as a mainstream issue. And it took a while for me to understand what I talk about with quality public schools in every neighborhood, local control, proper management of our scarce public resources. These are not radical things. Most people believe in these things. And so, it's just making sure that we're able to communicate that. And now, it's getting easier because I can actually give folks examples. And, you know, I got pelts on the wall that they can't take away, and it's, you know, we're, in that video, I spoke a lot about charter schools. You know, since then, we changed the state charter law with getting Assembly Bill 1505 passed, which brought more local control to school boards. I was really involved with that intentionally. I mean, I pulled off a three-year strategy to change the state law and flip the Oakland school board, and somehow, it worked. And so, over the last year for charter, because I also, I'm not going around saying we need to close all the charter schools. You know, I haven't moved on any charter schools. But over the last year, since I've been on the school board, the new charter applications that have come up, both of them have been denied. We did not approve any new Prop 39 leases for charter schools to- to, to lease our public facilities, no new ones. And four charter schools voluntarily gave up their charter and closed. So for the first time in anyone's memory, we've actually reduced the number of charter students in Oakland and have moved down to number two. And LA now has the highest rate of charter schools in California. And when I ran, I was real explicit with my language. I said, we were going to check charter growth. They couldn't grow anymore in Oakland. And we were going to start whittling down the number of charter schools because this was just not sustainable. And that's exactly what's happened through a change in law, uh, some policy changes and a different orientation in the district. And next up, I have seen the first draft of the new charter, or the board policy on charter schools, which the language is now written something to the effect of, since we are not actively seeking charters, you need to do this, this, and this if you want to apply. Instead of the language of, we want all quality providers to come to Oakland and do your thing. And so again, we've, we've been able to kind of, uh, unembed charter schools from our public school district. And that's all most of us have been asking for. And so it's been really, um, exciting and, and, and just for, we're in this weird time with, with COVID and COVID time and COVID issues. And so a lot of the, the tensions, the immediate tensions that we're facing in OUSD now are actually COVID related. Um, you know, there's still a lot to do, but our finances are in a good place. We've gotten all these extra COVID relief dollars. We ended last year, uh, the school year with over a $40 million budget surplus, separate from those COVID dollars. And so.
That's a big.
Uh, it's, it's huge and it allows us to change the way we do things and change our thinking. Um, but it's hard to create these structural changes that we need to still work on while we're in a pandemic also. And so it's just kind of these, these moving things, but I am very happy with on, uh, you know, my, my plan coming into the school board was, was three phases. Uh, stabilize, envision, and then build. And so first, I really thought we needed to stabilize the district by taking these threats off the table of school closures and privatization. Hopefully the, the trustee and the county and, um, and really fix our finances or get to the point where we have common understanding. Where we, hopefully we can get there by the summertime. But I wanna, I want, my, my caution is we then need to take the time to have an authentic, uh, envisioning process community-wide, to have these conversations that we just haven't been able to have for 20 years with these other forces around. Um, we need to be careful that we don't just launch into trying to build without taking that in intentional step. But it's exciting. That's why I'm saying by, uh, 20, uh, January of 2023, we will be swearing in three school board members. Um, it looks like now, I'm about 90% sure the three incumbents will not be running for office, which will have meant all seven forced out of office in, in, in one election cycle.
Yeah.
Um, we will be swearing in three new school board directors and hopefully we will have the state lone, uh, uh, taken care of and the trustee out of our lives. And we will have a real chance, starting in January of 23, of really pushing in another direction. And so we've been able to do stuff this year. We'll be able to still move stuff next year, but there's still issues with the old board in place on this board where there's only so much we, we can really do. But, but this is a huge opening and it is, um, it is, I think, really encouraging that, um, well, I'll speak on a personal level. When, when I came into the school, I, I've talked a lot for the last 10 years about these issues. But at a certain point, I didn't know if it would work or not. I didn't, maybe I was the crazy one. Maybe, maybe, maybe there was some, some.
Maybe the mayor was right, right?
You know, I had to entertain that, that possibility, cause I just didn't know for sure. And so to now be able to come into the school board and say, oof, I, I was right. Um, it, everything was justified. Um, I think I've been able to at least start to validate the faith folks have put in me. And it's, it's, it's reassuring, cause if I would have gotten to the school board and I would have been wrong, I would have been out of ideas and it would have just been, I, I guess that's how it would have had to have been. And so, um, you know, over my 10 years, they, they closed my school. They fired me. They traumatized my community. I made a promise to my community and to myself. And in the end, it's, it's worked and not only has it worked, it's, we're really set up now to start moving OUSD in a new direction. And that's what I'm most excited about because they're stopping school closures or there's making sure privatization's not here, but that's just nibbling around the edges. Um, I had a world-class elementary education in Oakland and that education's not available anyplace anymore. And that's where we need to get to. And I, I think we can, and I think we can in three years. Um, if, if we're smart and we're intentional, we use these extra resources to lower class sizes, bring back programs, uh, have a real equity for, uh, uh, formula to our, our funding. Um, we can even call them reparation schools if we want to. There's all of these things coming in and, and if, fingers crossed, um, education funding, uh, stays anywhere close to where it's been bumped up to during the pandemic, it's a whole new ballgame for us in Oakland.
Question, I have about, hmm, five, six months ago now, there was a kind of a disagreement between parents that were organized by the mayor and what few African-American Oaklanders were in attendance at a kind of impromptu press conference rally that I'm still puzzled why Oakland Mayor Libby Shaft did at the time, which, uh, reported on by Kev Choice and Davey D. And I put it on Oakland News Now and then put it on Facebook. And one of the people at a, uh, Facebook group that I, I was in and quit, uh, uh, basically wrote that they didn't want to hear a black perspective on the problem. This is what this person wrote. It's not a matter of basically, it sounds like I'm, you know, watering it down. That's what this person wrote and that's why I quit. Uh, and it's also, you know, parenthetically speaking, why I disagree with how Facebook has ran itself, but I think that's kind of common news now, right?
Yeah.
And where are we post that?
So thankfully, um, wasn't that the mayor organized that group? That group was organized and the mayor joined them, which I actually think might even be more problematic.
Yeah. So gasoline on the flame?
And, and, and that's, and that's where she chose to associate herself. Um, and I think again, it was a, by her, it was a misread. Um, thankfully, we didn't have tho, that many of those parents in Oakland. And so the group that you saw at the lake.
You see, it was a misread. How do you, how do you figure it was a misread on her part? What are you thinking?
No, no, I, 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 I might, I might get there because, because it was a very small group. And that was the extent of the voices saying that in Oakland. And even a lot of the people at the lake that day were from Berkeley or San Francisco.
Ah.
So when I look across the bay of San Francisco and what's going on there now, where they have recall campaigns, not just against Chesa Boldin, but against Allison Collins on the school board. I am close with Allison Collins. Those folks are crazy. They pulled out a crazy tweet from 2016 to try to frame her as, uh, anti-Asian and racist. And it is craziness, but they have, they have many more of these parents who started demanding reopening now, reopening now. And thankfully in Oakland, we don't have that many parents like that. There were all kinds of, I'll say, uh, their, their, their talking points were at least dripping in privilege. Um, and, um, again, we don't have many of those parents in Oakland. They sure didn't organize like that. Um, there were a couple of voices who were very difficult. Um, you will hear them say, um, what I consider racist things to me regularly, even still at school board meetings. Now, they don't, they're not gonna call me an epitaph, but, um, it, it's been a, an interesting thing, but they don't represent anyone in Oakland because that's just not Oakland. And actually, even if in Oakland, folks felt like that, they know better than, than to do that. And so that's why it was a misread by, by Libby. Be, in my opinion, looking from the outside, she thought that was her standing up with parents that she thought she was politically connected to. But that group never, you know, that was their one thing. They met at the lake that day. They had no influence over the district or, or anything. Um, they're not parents who were ever engaged before. They just kind of popped up with this issue. Um, and, and really most of us just joked it's because they didn't want to deal with their kids, so they were mad.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm sorry, I, you know, yes, I'm a school board director now, so these things matter to me. But I don't respond very well to the threat. Well, if, if you don't just open, well, I'm gonna take my kid out and go to private school. I'm like, well, I know families that would love that seat at Crocker Highlands. And I'm a Crocker kid. Um, you, you know, so, so I, I, it, it never, like, that incident was their biggest thing. And, and Kev's and Davey's interaction actually might've been a bigger story than, than the rally itself. And so, um.
Yeah.
I, I talked with Allison Collins in San Francisco.
I think, I know, I understand that. I think, uh, that's one million percent true. But I look at it this way, had their in, in, interaction not occurred, it would have meant that there were no black voices involved, right?
Well, the funny thing about those parents, because, uh, I know, I know people who weren't really in that group, but who were friends with some of the folks or shared their concerns. So I had, I had, um, meetings with folks. Um, in the end, those parents were upset because their voices weren't being heard.
Mm-hmm.
And so to me, I mean, I could have gone down there. I, I wanted no part of that. They were upset because I'm sitting on the school board and my voice is being heard.
Hmm.
They were upset because nobody was listening to them because they're not representative. And they weren't District Five parents. A majority of the parents in Oakland were parents at Montclair Elementary and Crocker Elementary. Um, and with some Hillcrest families thrown in, just from the families that I saw front and center. I'm sure there were people everywhere. So they should have met with the directors at their schools and done some, but that wasn't, um, you know, it's interesting, uh, uh, since I'm connected to a lot of other cities and I know, and at least, uh, in the, the education bubbles. Um, what, the experience that I have in Oakland compared to Allison Collins' experience in San Francisco is amazing. Um, and I have a much harder edge to me with people, with adults than Allison does. She's a nice woman who cares, who's put in 20 years' worth of work. And so people didn't like that she brought up admissions issues in San Francisco. Or they started to discuss the mural at, at Washington Elementary. And so they've turned all of this in, framed her as a racist. Then the San Francisco Democratic Party piles on.
Yep.
Sister London Breed piles on. The school board in San Francisco strips her committee assignments from her and she has to file suit just to be able to serve her role that she was elected to. And she didn't do anything, didn't do anything. And that's in San Francisco. So I am, I know that couldn't happen here. Like, I look at it as if that was gonna happen here, then I wouldn't have gotten elected.
Right.
Um, but it is, it is still there, even though, new Oakland, it's, it's different.
Isn't it a kind of racism when that happens though? I mean, instead of calling you a name, they just figure, you know, I'm, I'm wealthier than you. I know the institution better than you, so I'll get you out.
But, but for.
That's the idea, you know?
And, but for me, it's why it drives them crazy. I'm sitting on the school board.
Yeah.
I, I beat them all already. You know, I'll, I'll debate any of them in an open forum. They'll be even madder after that. And, um, you know, I, I.
See, you sound like Mark Zuckerberg, but you do.
Well, one, one of the, so I, I don't lack confidence, um, but, but it's also by any means necessary to me has always meant being able to beat them at their own game. And so I don't shy, you know?
Question.
I was, I was just on, you know, Fox and Friends Saturday morning, live on national TV. Cause Fox News in New York called me up and asked me if I wanted to come on the next morning to talk about my vote in the vaccine. Well, they, they, they sent me, you know, so they wanted me to talk about the, my vote in the vaccine mandate. Cause I voted no to our mandate here, cause I just don't think that's the way to go about it. And, um, and we have very low vaccination rates and that's the issue, not, not a mandate. But so they put me on, they didn't screen me or anything, gave me an open mic on national TV. Or the meeting, or the interview was about half as long as they told me it would be because I was prepared to go and I launched and I made my point and I could hear it in his voice. Yeah, you know, he tried to come back with something. I was prepared for that.
Did he post it anywhere?
I, I posted on Facebook. I'll make sure to send it to you also. Yes, I, I will repost it again. And then at the end, he tried to do a, a closing. Well, hopefully going forward, uh, uh, people will be more concerned about science and so, and, and so I cut him off in his, I said, well, that's what we've been doing in Oakland. You know, and it's like, I'm not scared of Fox News. Um, I, and, and this was a perfect opportunity.
Your voice comment.
I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have gone onto Fox News to talk about equity or critical race theory where they would feed me to the wolves. But they set me up thinking I was the black school board member who was going to be backing their day-long narrative about pushing back against mandates. And so I was able to lay it out, say why it was against our mandate here, talk about how the county helped provide 25,000 vaccines and we need to adopt that model. And they didn't know what, what to do. And the interesting thing to me was I kind of put it out there to folks, even though I only had a couple of hours, should I do it or not?
Hmm.
A lot of folks were telling me not to do it because they twist my words or this or that. And, um, you know, it, it might bite me in my behind sometimes, but, but I don't shy away from, from those sorts of things. And I, I think, um, I will always take the opportunity to represent my city, my constituents, my family. And, um, and I can handle a Fox News anchor. Um, you know, it, the question is, could they come and handle, you know, us here? And, and that's, in, in a larger sense, that's where I want Oakland to get back to and especially our school district. We, we have this inferior, inferiority complex that just holds us back. And I don't think, I, you know, on a personal level, I'm sorry to jump around. Um, it's, as I've tried, as I've tried to internalize a, a school board director, you know, the realizing, you know, Fox News somehow got my name in New York. Like I have a, a platform, not just because I'm on the school board, but Oakland is a top 50 city in population in this country. So being on the school board in Oakland has juice, has, has cachet. Um, and you know, it is, it is a, I'm not sure if that's the same, uh, if that's the same one or not. Probably is.
I saw your face, let's.
But $15 is just the start.
Oh, that's a commercial, that's it.
We'll keep doing a better job for our employees, whether they're here for a season or a career.
No COVID vaccine, no in-person school. That's the new policy adopted by Oakland, California School Board. Unvaccinated students 12 and older will be forced to take classes online starting in January. Our next guest is a school board member who voted against the mandate. He says less than half the teens in the district who are black or brown are actually vaccinated. Oakland Unified School District Board Member Mike Hutchison joins us now. Mike, glad to see you this morning. Now, you add this new mandate to the science that is there for anyone to see about the risk that children represent to each other and to themselves with COVID. And how did the board justify this decision to themselves?
Well, first I, I want to say that I'm fully vaccinated and so is my family. And I believe vaccinations are essential to keeping our community safe. But really I, uh, voted no on this mandate for, for two main reasons. Uh, number one is my understanding is in the state of California, it's the authority of the state legislature to determine which vaccinations are mandated, not local school boards. And what's really happened is local school boards have tried to. And what's really happened is local school boards have tried to find solutions that haven't been addressed by the state. And then the second reason, like you laid out, that I couldn't support this policy is because I represent a community that has lower vaccination rates than many of the surrounding communities. And I wasn't prepared to support a policy that could potentially force thousands of our students into uh independent study or potentially out of the district. I think the keys to raising the vaccination rates is access and education. And at one of the high schools I represent over the summer, we had a vaccination pop-up center supported by the County Department of Health that vaccinated over twenty-five thousand community members. I think those are the models that we need to expand. Access to accurate information and access to vaccinations, not mandates. We might not have the authority.
Not to mention the cost of forcing kids out of school. We know that now. After after almost two years of this, there's just a massive cost to kicking kids out of in-person learning. Here's what the Oakland Unified School District had to say. They said, we will work very hard to ensure every student knows all the options that they have. We will continue to educate them and their families about the importance, safety and efficacy of the vaccines. And as a very last resort, unenrolling a student would be a possibility. Your quick reaction, Mike?
Well, it's it's essential that we raise the vaccination rates in the community. And a lot of us just believe the best way to do that is through access and education. So I'm hopeful that the state will take action and provide guidance. And I'm hopeful that in the meantime, before this is implemented, we can still increase the vaccination rates in our community, so we don't have to face this crisis.
Yeah, I'm hopeful we'll follow the science and not crush the educational opportunities for students out there across this nation.
That's what we've been doing. That's what we've been doing in Oakland. Thank you.
We'll be talking to you. Thank you.
Well played, Mike. There you go. So uh, that was uh quite, well, first of all, you you rep- you represent the district well.
Thank you.
National television, are you are you giving thought to national politics?
Oh, no, 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 no thoughts to to national politics, but um, you know, it it was sort of a bucket list to be in the box on national TV. Um, I I never thought it would be on Fox News or or that's how it would be. And and even more, I uh, I don't have thoughts on anything else right now, except uh finishing my term at school board, because this job is unfinished, nowhere near finished, and it's and it's working. And so um, even if it was something I was interested in, which, you know, uh, I didn't get into this as as a stepping stone to the next office. Like, I have a, I have a mission to to accomplish here on the school board. And and that's really, I couldn't leave now. That would be um, you know, that is the priority. But also, just like the the opportunity to speak on Fox News, I'm in a position now where um, there might be opportunities coming coming down the road. And and I knew going into this, if I am um, even halfway as successful as I plan on being, um, there will be other options uh after I finish what I need to do here. Um, but this is, this is really important. And it's, and and let me, let me not skip over. It's fun. Um, it it is, it is a good feeling. It is rewarding. And and the struggle makes it that much more rewarding. And hopefully, you know, the, as we're moving into election season twenty twenty-two, we're we're gonna see if what happened in twenty twenty with, um, it was really, I think broadly across Oakland, but really highlighted with my election and Carol Fife's election for Council District Three. If that, if if that year was an outlier election, because Carol and I, in some ways, were a little different than other other folks coming in to running, we we had a uh in our own ways, we had a little extra juice. Um, or if if it's really more of a trend for how Oakland is moving uh electorally. Um, you know, with.
There are, and I believe she's going to do this on Tuesday, uh, three council members planning to run for mayor. One of them, Triva Reed, just got there as a councilor.
So she's she's decided now that she's going to also?
Well, she's not only decided her name, if you go to Oakland News Now and then click on City Council, as I'm going right here, uh, I'll 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 show everybody just so that you can see it in action and then see what has happened. But uh, but Triva, if you go to, here's Oakland News Now right here, right? And uh, that's just the ads, folks. That's part of, part of the, part of doing business, but you scroll down. Uh, and you go to City Council here, and you click on Oakland Elections here. Uh, and you close that, of course, because you don't want to be distracted. Boom, there's your electronic disclosures. Just, all you gotta do is click on Get Started Now, and uh, it opens up. We scroll down like this, and uh go to Journal Election, oh, eleven oh eight, twenty twenty-two. It opens up, gives you the candidates, do that, opens up. Uh, we can see, right, open position, City Auditor, nobody. And Courtney Ruby's, you know, supposedly the elder, there we've got uh, um, the sort of council president running for reelection. And then, of course, we have Shang Tao running for reelection here, which I find interesting, because I'm pretty certain that her announcement's not gonna have anything to do with this seat, okay? Then we have District Six, and that's Paulina Gonzalez and Lauren Taylor, all right? And then we have District Two Director, not not named yet, uh, then not named, and then here, but then we have Mayor. And then boom, we have Gregory Hodge, Derek Johnson, Tyron Jordan, that's three. Triva Reed is four, Stephen Shear is five, Derek Sue's six, Lauren Taylor's seven, Elisa Victory Valenueva is eight. And so of them, we have Triva Reed and Lauren Taylor running for mayor. And basically, they just got there. Now, Lauren's full, serving a full term, I understand, but he's never worked for the city of Oakland before. Uh, has no skin in the political game, you know, prior to that. I don't know of any uh, issue that he's come and lobbied for, like like you have, you know, before you ran. And Triva, her dad was District Seven Councilmember, the great Larry Reed, uh, and she's midterm for her. And yet she's running. What is it with all of these council members running for mayor?
Well, I, first, I I think it was interesting that uh, Councilmember Bass has not chosen to run for mayor. I I think that's more of, almost a bigger story, because that kind of bucks the trend. And um.
Or or Dan Kell, you know?
Well, I I think, I think Councilmember Bass, though, would have been positioned as the frontrunner for a lot of the community going in um, to it, where I'm not sure if Councilmember Cobb could have been able to to pull that off. You know, he he kind of got, as I put on the different hat here, he he kind of got sabotaged by by DSA when when all of a sudden they backed Ivanka Beckel's campaign out of the blue. Um, and 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 now we have Buffy Wicks.
And and DSA didn't help themselves by basically being, you know, pro regimes that were actually really communist without improving, they knew nothing about politics, something dope. What are you doing?
Well, it was, it was their, it was their first uh campaign in the East Bay as a new organization, and it was um, so they they have a lot of foot soldiers and do a lot of stuff, but but sometimes it's it's hit and miss, or they were still getting their legs.
Or intellectually clumsy.
Yes, but but I do want to say on on, you know, I'm all over the place tonight. In in terms of uh groups like that coming to Oakland, and I'm old enough now where I've had interactions with lots lots of them. Uh, I have found DSA to be, generally speaking, the most respectful of any of the groups and the most authentic in terms of uh, wanting to support leadership that we already had here, as opposed to groups coming in and thinking they know better. Now, there's always individual examples that that break the rule.
Let me be candid, uh, without um hijacking somebody, but this is my issue with DSA as its structure, because it can be structured. It's anti-intellectual. It's too emotional. It knows nothing about how government works, and it doesn't think through its arguments and its uh positions. I don't know of a single time when they pointed to any legislation at the state level that can really change, like, here's my issue, Mike, that E four, six, four, passed four and a half, five months ago, Bobby, Barbara Bobby Lopez, you may know. You did a fantastic job of ushering it through the legislature, got Gavin to sign it, the Governor of California. And as people, some people are arguing against Howard Turner because they don't like tax increment financing used there, here is a golden opportunity, written in black and white, to use tax increment financing to get money to businesses damaged by the pandemic.
So I would.
And we're doing nothing, and that's the perfect DSA issue. Perfect.
I don't.
Nowhere.
From what I've seen, I don't think that's the strength of the organization, especially East Bay DSA. I don't, and and, oh yeah, and and I don't know uh what the state organization is like, or, and especially, I don't know what the national is like. The the reason I have, besides um, generally speaking, I've found them to be respectful, and I've found a lot of these other groups not to be. So that is something that's just stood out for me. For me, it, I uh, for one, they're really good foot soldiers, and I mean that in the most respectful way, where they are great at uh organizing, canvassing, phone banking, campaigning, um, putting in work. The other thing that I really appreciated about them is too many um left-leaning organizations don't believe in electoral politics. And so for me, as somebody who um, my route was to get elected to the school board and and included in that process early on, joining the Democratic Party, which I had never been a member of before, and doing certain things, I need to uh, it was a lot easier for me to work with a group that believes in electoral politics. Um, and um, that is something that I I really value about DSA. And they have been influential in quite a few campaigns across the country. You know, from AOC to other folks that people know about, and they're. And and their energy has really helped do that. But yes, there is not uh alignment on all the issues. There's always these problems with uh with analysis. Uh, here locally, um, there was like the the famous incident that blew up between DSA and Kat Brooks when she was running for mayor, which, in in my opinion, as somebody who was kind of asked to come into it from the outside, but knew better than to step into that mess. Um, it was, it was, it was really based on some some misunderstandings and missteps that could have easily been avoided. Um, so there's still always those kinds of things.
I'm gonna ask you, how much of that was race?
Oh, that, it's, I don't want to say it's always race and it's all race, but but yes, race was a huge part of that. And then there's the personalities involved. And it doesn't mean that somebody's at fault. But if you know the personalities involved, it wasn't hard to predict. And and the the simplest version of it is, um, you know, Kat Brooks assumed that she would have the endorsement of DSA, which she was right to assume. Uh, DSA wanted her to prove it a little bit more than probably they should have required. And it turned offensive. And and once you, and once you start getting to those positions.
I did not like, and I do not like the way they treated her at all.
Oh, no, I I don't either. Hey, they they called me up to ask me to talk to her afterwards. I told them, you must have lost your mind. You think, actually, first, first, I was asked if I wanted to give a quote in an article in a magazine about it. And I was like, wait, so you want me to be the black voice to go justify what happened? You're out of your mind. So there's always those issues. And and so, um, you know, thankfully for me, uh, especially in education, I have the Journey for Justice National Alliance. And we are a national alliance of black, black and brown-led grassroots organizations. And so I have that, I have that family. I I have these places where um where I can stay strong and and get all of that, which allows me to work in coalition with other groups that don't have those uh same orientations. And, you know, I I also really believe in in the Panther model, and that's kind of what I I grew up on. And so I'm very aware of race and 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 intersectionality and all of those things, but um even more so now in Oakland, where we're down to whatever it is now, twenty-seven, twenty-five percent. Um, in this country, we have to be able to work with um other groups of folks, otherwise we will never win anything. And if if we're not able to find that commonality, we won't be able to move forward.
Mike, that's what bothers me. I'm glad you said it, because, you know, it, uh, and out of respect for your time, we'll just go to wrap it up, because as well as things we have to come back and talk some more about, but you know, what really bothers me about the way Oakland has changed is that it's, I look at it this way, yeah, our numbers as African-Americans in Oakland are shrinking, or black folks in Oakland, not necessarily just American, but you know, American living now are shrinking, but it seems like rather than really banding together as one, we're splintering apart. Look at the number of people running for mayor who are black, and yet, you know, tell me if there is one single issue agenda they can all coalesce around. And the answer is no, you've got like Lauren Taylor, I'm not in favor of as mayor, and it's for reasons that are, they're both personal, but uh, but they're also, I think, exemplary of how we as African-Americans have tended to treat each other at times, where in his case, it's like, hey, you know, um, basically what he did was, it was a large degree of disrespect for me as a person carrying a message and uh, and basically giving a lot of of his free energy to white media, as I call it, it's traditional white media, and putting their stuff out there, but then he writes me a text that basically says, well, essentially that I'm lazy for not writing about him. And excuse me, and I want to be very blunt, uh, they, he has no problem writing something and sending it to them and not me, or asking them to do something. He claims that's not the case. Well, his treatment of them, and a number of elected officials will like this, all right? Uh, runs counter to the idea they're actually in the middle, post George Floyd, really supportive of black businesses. Mine is a black-run business, like it or not. And they seem to come off with uh this idea that, you know, you shouldn't be in a white man's game. That's how they treat me, okay? It doesn't matter that I built uh what is now a extremely well-working media aggregator at Oakland News Now that combines YouTube videos as news, which has never been done before. All the innovations I've done, because I did them as a black person, they just don't even look at, and that includes Lauren. But for Lauren to put that in a text to me, after I'm criticizing him, it just sent me to a place I've never been in my entire life, that I never thought that week ago. And I have never treated anybody like that in my worst moments, knowing how hard it is institutionally, you know? So that, you can tell by the length of time I spent explaining it, that's my issue. And I'm thinking, you know, you're a council member, you you got the job, it's in the middle of a pandemic, we have huge problems, and all you can think about is your next level. At a time, we need you to think about how to use your current position, your current position to help people. And then the legislation is there, and I've been, I've yelled about, I even told Dave Cavall about, you know, tax increment financing, but I've also yelled about it literally to every, to a number of council members, some are not there anymore, going all the way back to two thousand sixteen. This is on video. So I am at a point where I'm saying, all right, knowing our problems, that the majority of people that are homeless look like me and you, and all these folks that look like me, you're running, you already have these offices, you're getting paid. Why are you going to a higher office and spending taxpayer dollars essentially to get yourself out there, and you're not even doing it the right way? Because even with all that in the polls, they're still not even known, you know? Because they don't even get how media works. You see what I'm getting at? But it's it's an issue with me. It's a huge issue.
For a long time. You know, I I agree with you. And and even more than that, what we need to be doing is not even linking, just linking together. We need to do a much better job of linking up with our Brown brothers and sisters.
Amen, amen.
You know, even if it's just a matter of survival, but I think it it makes a lot more sense than that. Thankfully, I'm at the school board and with the school district. And so some of those issues of the city, I mean, it just seems overwhelming to me. Our situation in the school district is a little bit different, because the numbers are always gonna be skewed more. So yes, we've lost our our black population in our schools, and yes, it's been made up largely by brown population. But we are still, you know, seventy-five to eighty-five to plus ninety percent of color, depending on how you determine that for a district. And so there's there's certain, almost guardrails on our numbers here. But largely, it's the same kind of thing. We. But largely, it's the same kind of thing. We have lost our orientation as a community. Um, where we used to look inward and now we look outward um, for everything. And, and that's kind of, you know, from closing our neighborhood schools to the amount of folks we have now sleeping under overpasses. Um, it, to me, it's all of that same thing. And I don't, I don't think it's an easy fix, but I am, it's what I'm most excited about now in the school district is I can feel that there has been a shift in the culture. Now, I don't know if it's gonna be enough or fast enough or that. And, and again, I um, you know, I don't know who's gonna be mayor next year. Cause when I look at it, with all due respect to everyone, I don't see anyone who's ready to be mayor. I, I don't see anyone, you know, we haven't cultivated that kind of leadership for the next round. I'm, I'm really worried. And you know, with, with uh, council member Taylor running, that means now there's an open seat in district six. And it's, it's, it's just gonna add to all of this churn. And some of it is good and needed. But it feels like it's too much of, of this musical chairs instead of a next wave of leadership coming in. And you know,
Sue, I like Derek Sue because he's part of a growing constituency that hasn't been listened to by, you know, the current office holders.
I, I don't, I do too. And, or even, you know, um, I like Alyssa Victory. Um, and actually she has a real impressive uh, uh, story and personal resume also. But, but I also like folks that I feel like um, there's some experience. And it's almost that chicken and egg thing. We need new folks, but there needs to be some sort of experience too. And it, it just, you know, I, I, I hold Oakland in very high esteem. Again, we're a top fifty city in this country. We deserve um, world-class leadership. And I'm just, I, I don't know if we're there yet. And um, and even these folks, e- even the, the council members, they, they might make great mayors. You know, I, I, I'm not saying there's no way they could, they, they might be, they might be able to, to rise the, to the occasion. But we're such a large city, we shouldn't have to take those kinds of gambles.
See, I, you know what? I have doubts, though. I have my doubts watching, for example, the Howard Turner presentation to the county once again. And the consultant gives an entirely wrong taxing or financing number. Nobody knows about it. The county repeats it and repeats a number that they think they're getting and it's based on uh, and I'm then, and see, Mike, here's my problem. I work for,
Low, yeah, I, I have a low opinion of, of all of, of everyone, though. Like, I, I knew that coming in. I don't want to say, I don't want to say anything extremely disrespectful, but I've met, I've met people all the way up to the secretary of education, Arnie Duncan. Um, I have not met that many impressive people where I say, oh, I get it. Either, either by their presence or, or what they demonstrate that they know. Very few impressive people in these positions. Whereas the folks that I've met along the way and worked with, amazing people. And so I, you know, I don't, I don't have a very high op- opinion of a lot of these because you know, it's weird now that I'm here. I, I was hoping that maybe I'd see some reason. Okay, now I get it. It, you know, I'm, I'm considered in it, you know, I'm, I'm waiting for the day my name's gonna be thrown into one of these polls for mayors. I mean, it, it's, it's not, we're, we're not skimming off the,
I thought you might bust out that right here.
But, but we're, we're not, we're not like attracting the cream of the crop. We, we don't have a, a, a system to cultivate that kind of leadership. You know, I would love to see our council members use their staff and their offices to cultivate that, if that's what people are really about. Instead of just having somebody to run for your seat when you run for the next seat. And, and um, you know, we, we just haven't had it yet. It's, it's interesting to me. I've always uh, my, my personal tendency is to uh, is to question and to be a contrarian. And I, I also, I think it's a lot of that. It is real easy. I was having a conversation the other day with a former Oakland school board member who might be running again. Um, and he was saying he was really disappointed at the end of his term because he felt like the system sucked him in. And there is that part too. It, you, it has to be, like, I don't worry about it too much with Carol Fife, because that was stated at the front end that she was not gonna get sucked into the system. You know, I know I'm not gonna get sucked into the system because I'm, I'm intentionally doing things to make sure that I don't. I think it's real easy for a lot of reasons to get to elected office and you're a part of the team. You say, well, if, if I'm here, this must be legitimate. Um, and, and I know even uh, for me, it is hard to sometimes determine if I'm doing enough, if I'm pushing enough. Um, and so, you know,
I want to get your thought on this photograph on, on the, in line with the conversation. This right here uh, is your Oakland City Council.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting for my,
As I had said, in a video that I made,
So I'm waiting for my school board photo because we still haven't been able to take photos. So that was their second one after their serious one. And, and so I think it's a good thing if they're working together. Um,
Oh, it's not, I'm not criticizing that. Let me, let me, the photo, because it tells you who they really are, though. You can see the personality.
Yeah, it, it, it does, it does much more. And, you know, and that's the other, like, we have just not elected, uh, we, it's not even elected. Hopefully for next year, we will raise the bar and have a higher quality of candidates to choose from in all of our races. So like for school board, it's a struggle sometimes to make sure there's even two candidates running. Which means you are, you are taking what you get instead of us pushing to have qualified people in these positions that, you know, they have the power to determine the fate of our city and, and determine the way a lot of our lives go. I'm in charge of almost a billion dollars a year now in budgets. Yep. That, you know, this is, this is huge. And so we need to have um, uh, people. And, and there has to be a way for us to, to know people's personalities better too. I, I have the problem now that I'm on the school board where folks either know me through, through soundbites or, or, or what the impression or opinion out there of me is instead of um, it's just really hard for there to be a, a real way um, to get to know folks better. And especially since we've been in pandemic. So for me, for, for Carol, when we uh, for council member Reed, when we ran, we ran during a pandemic. So I didn't even do any hard house meetings in my campaign or any of that, because we couldn't. So we even have less known about them than we would have in other years.
Right. And we see what this photo shows to me. For example, you've got in red Nikki Fortunato, the best, the president of the council, Shang Tao who's running for mayor. There's a rumor that Carol Fife may run for mayor. She just got there. But it's, this, this, this middle section, and they are all together, but and then Dan is off to the side. I was wondering what was going through his thought process where he seems to be communicating, I don't want to be part of that. And then Rebecca's got the Nixon peace sign.
And, and I think, you know,
You know,
One of, one of the good things is looking at this picture, how different it is. You know, ju- just having a, 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 a new generation of Reed on the council means this is the first time of the pictures look different in almost thirty years.
Right.
So um, that is encouraging to me that it feels like we're in this time of, of turnover to new leadership.
Stuff like the queen.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That is not intentional. That's powerful photograph.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, you know, it, it is, it is interesting.
It's almost like a, it's Oakland's Rorschach test.
Well, and see, for me, it's always like when I run into, to various council members, it's always, will, will they make eye contact? Will they stop and say hi? Will I get a hug? Like, it's, it's, it's the same, it's the same kind of thing. And for some of them with me, I get a different reaction depending on where we are and who's watching.
You care to name names?
No, and it's, and at this point, it's, it's not a, it's not a bad thing. Um, it's, it's always interesting to me, you know, for I, I can mention two names. Uh, for a while, uh, council member Cobb was, was nervous around me like years ago. And I can understand that. He didn't know me. And it, it kind of made me chuckle where whenever I'd come around, he just got a little bit nervous. I don't know if he had heard something or it's just something about my presence. You know, now it's all good because he's, he's gotten to know me a little bit over time. And so there's none of that anymore.
Dan, it's that he is um, he's introverted in a way. What gets, so you would say, how does an introvert run for office? Dan gets naturally agitated about certain issues he feels and I've been interested in. Space change, you know?
Yeah. And it, it wasn't anything ever, ever bad. I just, I just noticed it. So I didn't want to press into his face too much. And then, and then council member Fife and I, Carol and I um, have worked together for years. Um, so I will, I will always get a good reaction from her. Uh, you know, we, we, you know, a year ago, uh, we shared a, a hug and a tear together as we both got elected together. Um, but for me, it's, it's always, you know, uh, I was seen a certain way before I was on the school board. Then I was able to run a campaign where I got endorsements that would impress political operatives. And then I won and it all changed. And you know, when I run into any of them now, it's like I'm a, I'm a member of the club. It's a, it's a very strange, um, it's a strange thing. And, and so just for, for a lot of folks in different positions, um, the way I was treated before I was elected as opposed to after, there has been a change. Um, and this is interesting to see. And in my head, I'm still Coach Mike on the playground, so.
I've been here since, you know, seventy-four and I worked, my first job at a grass was with uh, the Oakland um, Office of Economic Development Employment. And I learned how to do taxing and financing there in eighty-seven. That's when Pat Cashman hired me. Uh, it isn't, you are part of a club and that's not a pejorative.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thousands of people to represent them in Oakland. And I don't care how I feel about a job that someone's doing, there is anybody out there that I dislike. Uh, I'm, I dislike, like what I was talking about Lauren, what I was telling was the way I was treated.
Oh, no, I, I,
Because I came, the video is clearly wanting to be all in for him and because he's there. I honor that big time. And that's where you're at, you know? You, you, you were elected. Uh, no one can take that away from you now.
Yeah, I'm in the book.
Well, you're in the honor of history. And, and uh, that's no small achievement, my friend. That is no small achievement. So, there you go, yeah.
Thank, thank you. And uh, I appreciate that. I, I recognize it and, and I honor it. Um, and the best part is that I am able to do these things. Um, I think it's a real benefit for the community, but it's also been very personal for me. And, and to be able to, you know, last year in Oakland, or not, uh, got the years blend together. Uh, two thousand, what was that? Nine, nineteen, no, two thousand twenty. Oof, um, BOP Black Organizing Project got the George Floyd resolution passed, which brought uh, police-free schools to Oakland. They had been working on that issue for ten years since the murder of Raheen Brown. And that really inspired me seeing that last year. And so now for me, a year later, to com- complete kind of my, and my crew's ten-year mission. Um, it really feels like we were putting a, a bookend to what's happened. And we're really looking to go forward. So I appreciate this. I, as you can see, I can come and just talk this forever. Um, and I, yeah, I just really want folks to get engaged. And right now, people need to consider running for office next year. Um, it uh, for a school board and for the city council, it's the even seats up, two, four and six. Um, if you're not gonna run yourself, there's gonna be campaigns to get involved with. Besides those, we got mayor, we got uh, our assembly members, we got DA. That's gonna be an open seat for the first time. And that's up. The sheriff is going to be up. There is a lot of movement we can get on a lot of issues. So this is, this is big.
Fun times, folks.
Yes, Hunger Games.
Hunger Games, I like that. He's the man, Mike Hudson. Mike, thank you, thank you, sir. Hey, stick around in the back uh, backstage. Folks, thank you very much. Subscribe to ZN62, bookmark OaklandNewsNow.com. And hey, you want to know who's running? All you gotta do is go to Oakland News Now. You know what to do now. All right. That ends this broadcast, folks. Stick around, Mike.